Commissioner Abrams. Commissioner Petra.
Petra, here.
Commissioner Brials.
Here.
Commissioner Brunda.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Nolan.
Present.
Commissioner Geiger.
Here.
Okay. With that, we go to part B on our agenda, a public hearing on the Mill Creek Building Code 2021 update. Planning Commission Resolution, well, actually, we should go approval of the minutes, sorry, skip down. So in our packets and online is the March meeting minutes. Were there any corrections? Not hearing any corrections, a motion to adopt them.
I move that the minutes of the March, or the January meeting be approved, March meeting be approved.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimously pass that. So now to our hearing, I'm sorry.
Alright, good evening, planning commission. So, the hearing today is on the 2021 International Building Code update. So first, a bit of background. The International Building Code is updated every three years. And the Washington State Building Code Council prepares Washington State specific version that applies across the entire state. They recently updated to the 2021 Building Code from the 2018 Building Code. And Mill Creek needs to also update our references in our city code, so we maintain compliance with the state codes. So in the proposed amendment, the primary change is updating all references to the 2018 Code to the 2021 Code. There are also some smaller changes. We removed some amendments to the Building Code, which changed the permit application tenements and expirations. And we are removing those amendments so that it aligns the Mill Creek's Code, aligns with the state code. We also moved some of the residential work except for permits from the Building Code section to the Residential Code section. And we made the permit valuation process more clear. So overall, pretty minor amendments, just keeping pace with the state building codes. Are there any questions?
Commission?
I'll just a quick question, for the permit expiration being removed, does that mean you, so there's no expiration? And then someone can get a permit now 20 years from now, is that what it means, or?
Great question. So, in the Building Code, there are expirations. You have 180 days to finish your application. And then, once you get your permit, you have 180 days to complete your work unless you keep completing your work. You have to, basically, you have to request inspection within 180 days to keep your permit valid. Mill Creek had amended it to say it was two years instead of 180 days per inspection. So we're proposing removing the section that made Mill Creek different, just having it same as the rest of the state.
Any other questions? So in our packet was a planning commission resolution 2024-176 that adopts what we were just hearing about, and is there any discussion on that? So I would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
Chair, do we have to?
Oh, we have to open the hearing, yes, I'm sorry. So do we have any public here to make comments on that, online or in the audience? And online, do we have anybody? Okay, so, we opened our hearing. Not having any public comments, then we will close our hearing. Any further discussion based on the lack of comments from the public? So then we can entertain a motion to adopt the resolution as proposed by staff.
So this is Dave Hamilton, I move to adopt the resolution recommending approval to the Mill Creek Council of amendments to the Mill Creek Municipal Code, Chapter 15.04, updating the Mill Creek Building Code.
Can I second the motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, a resolution passes. Now I can move from our hearing. Our hearing will close. So officially close our hearing now, and we'll go to our item C on our agenda, briefing and discussion.
Who second the motion?
Petra.
Okay.
Hello everyone. I'm gonna try to negotiate two computers up here. There it is, amazing. It's shared already, okay. Good evening, everyone, nice to see you all again. Today, we are going to talk about the comp plan yet again. And we're going to start with economic development and move on to housing. Kara, do you want to say anything before we get started?
Yes, I can't see what slide we're on, but I don't know if that matters.
Oh, we have to share on here, sorry, hold on, okay. There we go.
Perfect, thank you, Civil.
No problem.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, nice to see you all again, thanks for allowing me to join virtually. So like Andrew said, we're here tonight to talk about economic development and housing elements. And we sent the draft goals and policies for housing about four or five weeks ago. And had, I think, about a three-week period to turn around comments. And we received four planning commissioner comments. And so, we're hoping that we might get a couple more folks getting comments back to us for economic development that Civil, I believe, will send out tomorrow, the draft goals and policies. And then, we will then jump in.
I already emailed it out, so.
Yep, we received it today.
Great, okay, good, yes, looking forward to hearing about all of your thoughts on that because there's lots of things to talk about now that we have a new element. So after that, we'll move on to environment and parks and rec in May, and we'll collect comments about economic development then. And then we'll do transportation and utilities and capital facilities later in the summer. And tonight, like Andrew said, we can slip. We will start with economic developments and introduce the high-level goals and the different policy ideas underneath them. And then, we'll probably spend the majority of this evening going through the feedback on housing goals and policies and collecting additional thoughts, and then we'll talk about next steps. I'll pass it over to you, Andrew.
Thanks. Okay, so, thought it might be useful to just talk a little bit about goals and policies again because they are very wordy and often similar in nature when you read them back-to-back. But it's important to remember that goals are the bigger-picture ideas and the policies are specific actions and decisions and that guide the direction of implementing and achieving the goals. So as we go through the goals and policies, the way that they're organized, having the policies nested under the goals, which you saw with the housing elements, it's gonna be the same with all the other elements. The intention is to look at the sort of goal and its associated policies in one, as one sort of, you know, slice of the pie. And so, there may be sometimes when the goal seems a little vague and that it may need to be clarified, how it's gonna work or what it actually means, and a lot of times, that's happening within the associated policies. So, we just wanted to highlight that again, a little bit of context as we go through these. And then, there are some things, I think this happened a little bit more in the land use element, that have been moved to code and regulation, so these are very specific things, like, you know, design standards, setbacks, et cetera, that are overly specific to be in the comp plan. So there are some things that are addressed, you know, through regulation, that won't be found directly in the policies. So, just a reminder of the hierarchy, how it works. So I'm gonna talk about the economic development goals and policies that we've drafted. I think it was in January or February, I was here and we talked a lot about economic development. We had some background information and we got a lot of great feedback from you on the direction for this element, because it's a new element. There were, I think, four economic development goals in the previous plan, which we've integrated in here, but there were no policies and there wasn't a separate element. This plan will have an economic development background section with that data we looked at before in a chapter, as well as goals and policies. So, this is where we came up with the new policies. Some of them came from the GMA and Commerce Checklist. Some of them came from requirements from the multi-county planning policies and PSRC's Economic Development Element Guide, which has a lot of policy guidance. Then we have the countywide policies from Snohomish County, so when you see MPP and CPP here on the right, that's what those are referring to, and we've included those for your reference as well. And then, of course, the input from you guys when we were here a few months ago. So we've proposed six goals, and here are the main themes. The first goal is about community identity and economic development in the region. Secondly, the tax base and revenue. Thirdly, the connection between economic development and housing. And we talked about that a lot in the context of the sub-area here over the past few months. The fourth is target business sectors, which we discussed quite a bit a few months ago. Climate, which is a high priority on the multi-county and countywide planning policies. And then, small businesses and opportunity areas. So like we did with housing. Today, I'm gonna introduce each goal, we can talk about it a little bit. I'm gonna introduce the ideas, or the specifics, the general ideas behind each policy. And then, you'll have until the 12th of May to give us feedback on the document that you received today. Any questions? Okay. Okay, here we go, goal ED1, okay, this is community identity, regional policy, it says, "Provide for continued economic growth and development in Mill Creek such that the community's established identity and economic assets are nurtured while supporting regional growth and economic strategies." This one pretty much came from the 2015 Plan with a couple minor changes. So the policies talk about working with the Chamber of Commerce, local businesses, partners in the county, and reviewing code and permitting timelines, so, you know, making sure that it's easy to do business here in Mill Creek. And also connecting with some other elements, including the land use element around commercial and business development in annexation areas through zoning and infrastructure. And most of those were also taken from the 2015 Plan, plus or minus, maybe changes. Okay, the second goal is about tax base and revenue. "Support economic activities that provide for a strong tax base, contribute revenues to the city, and provide a diversity of living wage jobs and economic opportunities for all Mill Creek residents." This kind of came out partially of the conversation we had about wages with the City Council as well. There's related policies about an equitable tax structure, a specific policy about encouraging living wage jobs and exploring the increased minimum wage, which was something that the commission was interested in including. And then again, tying in with utilities and capital facilities to ensure that there's sufficient infrastructure in place for business. Okay, the third goal is a little long. "Foster connection between housing and economic development to increase quality of life, reduce traffic and commute times through improving jobs-housing balance, promoting development of housing affordable to Mill Creek employees and focusing medium and high-density housing development in designated sub-areas to create a critical mass to support commercial and retail services in those areas." So this combines two original 2015 policies, or goals, rather. Including the discussion of critical mass, and that relates back to some of the conversations we had about the sub-area, about the town center, about having more people in proximity to the retail areas up in the town center and potentially down here, as well as regional goals, including this jobs-housing balance question, which we talked about, and it is a little, you know, it is a little of a bit of a blanket policy from PSRC to say that all jurisdictions should work towards having like a one-to-one jobs-housing balance. But nonetheless, you know, there's definitely guidance from regional policy that should be included. Okay, so the policies, encouraging retail businesses in suburbs, yeah, oh yes, into Brials.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that I understood what you're saying, improving jobs-housing balance.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just the ratio?
Yeah.
That you explained last night, that maybe you have five jobs to one house in the same district, and a lot more people in that live there. Is there a direction that we're headed with improving?
Well, the direction is closer to one. Well, that's the direction that, yeah, that PSRC is encouraging jurisdictions, that's the direction. So we'll add that in here, and I think there's a policy that says that, if not. And I did receive your comments on that on housing, and there's some discussion of that later. A lot of that has moved over here from housing, where I think it makes more sense.
Ask, you're saying that's the plan throughout the county and PSRC, so Seattle is considered, Seattle has always had an excess of employment.
Right, of course, yeah.
Are they also being directed by PSRC to go to one?
Well, I don't think they're directed to reduce jobs, you know, I mean, obviously, there's some grain of salt, you know, in that. But I think the idea, the ideas and the reasons behind that policy have more to do with traffic, commuting, reducing emissions, you know, transit and opportunity for people who live in the community, working in the community, like we've talked about before. So I think that, you know, the idea that every city should have a perfect match is obviously kind of ridiculous. But the idea that, you know, it could be a way to help reduce some of those climate impacts and also increase proximity to jobs, you know.
Yeah, just to bring it up.
Yeah.
That's the underpinning of all traffic model.
Yes.
Is the attraction there of.
Yeah, trip generation.
It's the city, you know, where do we land when, you know, it's a PSRC goal, but small cities do it, but big cities don't, and that's kind of thing.
Yeah.
Sure, we don't put ourselves in a competitive disadvantage as we look at that goal.
Okay.
Andrew?
Yes, oh, sorry.
You mentioned, are they being direct? Are we being directed, or is it guidance, or a goal that we're agreeing to, or how does that work? Is somebody dictating to us that we need to head towards one or one?
I think that the regional goals are written in a way that's not that dictatorial. It's more of, it's more of encouraging jurisdictions to provide opportunities for people to live near where they work, essentially, or vice versa. Work near where they live. And so, you know, that can take a lot of forms in that larger umbrella of policy direction. But no, it's not, it's not like other targets, you know, it's not like our land capacity targets and other things we've talked about that are concrete numbers that are like evaluated numerically, as far as I understand it. Did you have a point on that, Kara?
No, I think that's a great discussion, I think, yes, it's more of guidance and aspirational, but also, I was, apologies for asking this, but I think that some of the commissioners' microphones aren't working, and so it's a little bit difficult to hear online, but I think I'm getting it through Andrew's microphone, so I can follow along.
I, for one, just didn't turn mine on, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, so the policies here, retail businesses in sub-areas, that's something we've talked about a lot. Encouraging, ensuring the vitality of e-Gov and the town center. Obviously, that's important, that was a goal from the previous plan as well, which we've sort of changed to a policy out of this larger goal here. Encourage pedestrian-oriented commercial uses, placemaking, a lot of things we talked about at the joint council and planning session. Okay, goal four. "Develop implementation programs for economic objectives that will encourage economic growth and protect existing businesses while attracting new businesses and industries, particularly key regional industry clusters and businesses providing goods and services for export." Again, the export is a larger regional policy, you know, guidance. But I think we did talk about regional industry clusters here last time when we were talking about economic development, and there's a policy that calls out a bunch of these ones that we discussed, aerospace, healthcare, et cetera. There's a policy about hiring economic development staff in the category of how do we make these things happen? And again, capital improvements in commercial areas, sub-areas, and near transit. And I believe under goal four, we also proposed something which is not on this slide, which was based on the MPPs, and there was some discussion of it at some point. So I added it in the review copy that we got this morning. It's a policy about enhancing arts and cultural institutions. I know that there was some talk about that really early on in this planning process, and we had some notes on it. So I wanted to put that in there to get your feedback, so feel free to leave some feedback on that policy. It was basically, I just rewrote the multi-county planning policy as it is, as a starting point for that. So if that's something that's of interest to include, you can let us know in the document review. Okay, and number five. "Encourage efforts to sustain and respect the natural environment in the city and surrounding areas through support of climate-friendly, sustainable, and resilient businesses and technologies." This one also came from the 2015 Plan. Changed a little bit of the language about resilient businesses and sustainability to more closely match the policy and goal guidance from PSRC and this county. So there's two policies here, one is encouraging sustainable business practices such as the reduction of waste and other green, you know, options that businesses have as possible for the city to encourage. And then, secondly, more on the emissions reduction side of climate goals, encouraging commercial uses to be accessible to pedestrians, cyclists, and transit users. And that also goes along with overall goals about proximity to transit and density in sub-area.
Can I ask a general question?
Go ahead.
Is there somewhere where we maintain these definitions for some of the wording we use here, like sustainable and resilient, just because depending on the context, it means something different? I think that's a very specific way you mean it in this, particularly as it relates to climate. Friendly, so is there somewhere where we maintain like a definition when it comes to our actual final documents?
We will have a glossary in the final comprehensive plan, so we can make sure to include those terms.
Can you elaborate, encourage commercial uses to be accessible? What does that mean?
As new commercial development occurs, to ensure that it's accessible, so that there's like sidewalk infrastructure, bike infrastructure. And also, that relates to some of the goals around the sub-areas as well, where there is proximity to transit, like down here, and I can find the actual policy here.
Oh, you're talking about being, building close in proximity to mass transit and such, okay.
Yeah, I can read it to you, it's a little weird the way I summarized it there. It says, "Through infrastructure investments and development regulations, encourage commercial uses to be accessible for pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit users to help reduce greenhouse gas emissions and traffic." Just trying to prevent putting too many words on this slide. Okay, finally, goal six, this is about small businesses. "Strive to sustain and increase economic opportunities for all Mill Creek residents through support of small women and minority-owned businesses, job training and education programs, and consideration of displacement of existing businesses." Three policies, the first one is a sort of implementation-type policy, so some ideas for how to encourage small business in the city, things like storefront improvement grants, technical assistance for people starting businesses, and prioritizing small business teneting and new development where possible. Mitigation of small business displacement and supporting education and job training, mostly through providing space for schools. And then, at the end, there's another one that's not on the slide, which was also from the multi-county planning policies that came up when we were looking to make sure we had fulfilled all the themes and things that are covered in there about the involvement of tribes and ethnically diverse communities in the economy. So I put the MPP policy in there for you to review, again, like that other one in the document, so you can provide feedback on that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
So, I would like to know about the small woman and own my, woman-owned and minority-owned businesses. That happened a couple decades ago, I believe we've been starting that, even in the 90s. So are the male-owned businesses, do they have the same advantage now as the women's? Since women account for 39% to 47% of fully and partially owned businesses, I don't have the local stats, and women of color are 89% of new ownerships of small businesses. So they're doing pretty good, but I just want, I'm concerned a little bit about male-owned businesses. Is there, do they have an equal leg up?
Yeah, I don't have a statistic on that. So, I think that this goal was, you know, again, related to general guidance on, you know, on disadvantaged businesses in general, or, you know, business owners. So that's where it came from, I don't, yeah, I don't have a, I don't have any, like, research of hand on that in the region. Do you know anything, Kara, that'd be relevant?
No, I don't, unfortunately.
That'd be interesting to know if you can find any information.
We'll put it on the list of things to do.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions on economic development? Look forward to hearing your responses on the matrix.
It's the 12th of May?
Yeah. Sunday, the end of Sunday, May 12th is when it would be great to get them.
I don't know if it's so much a question, but I'm trying to brainstorm some ways in which you might mitigate small business displacement. I just, would we, like, put out a statement saying we oppose some large conglomeration purchasing a small business in our area? And thus adding it to their conglomeration, I don't know, like, I don't, what would it be to? I don't know what it would be to mitigate small business displacement, because I can't think of an example that is within the power of the city.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Is this on?
Yeah.
We took a tour of Kenmore last week, and one of the issues you've got when you say, here's a new building that's gonna come in, the rents are higher, and all the little shops that are gonna go away when you go from a 40-year-old strip mall center to ground-floor retail and five stories of residential above it, that's what you would be concerned about. So the little shops that exist, for, think of like, think of like downtown Old School, Bothell, Main Street. You see some cool stuff there, and you see some old stuff there, that if you're gonna go and make it tall, some of those little shops that are probably able to get by on $1,000 a month, but not on $3 a month for rent, you gotta think about how you displace those if you go to a higher density or newer development. Like, it's one place we talked about displacement.
Well, I'll just point out, the city, when they did the last of the developments of the north, required those work-live units, which was a great small business place, and I'm happy, as a commissioner who was on at the time, to see that probably half of them now actually have small businesses. I was like, oh, okay, and that was a big thing with the developer at the time, was they did not want to have any kind of work-live units in there, but the city really pushed that and supported it, and, you know, maybe that's an example of where we've done something.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just did not know what is a method by which you could mitigate small business displacement when big business can just buy it for a lot more than it's worth, you know?
Yeah, I think it's focused, I mean, the policy, the goal, the policy is focused a little bit more on, like, displacement of the location of the business through, when redevelopment occurs, rather than just displacement as far as getting bought out. But there is actually a great small business anti-displacement group called the Small Business Network, I think they have a big toolkit on small business anti-displacement, that's pretty interesting. So I can send that along. Also, you know, yeah, some of the things that are related to the small business encouraging, small business policy are also relevant here, you know, if there is the need for some sort of upgrade or small grant or. Is the need for some, some sort of upgrade or small grant or something, or even. You know, cities, I mean, larger cities have, for example, that really want to see a particular small business continue in a certain. New redevelopment can lease the space and release it to the small business at a discounted rate, for example. So there, there's a, there's a, there's a bunch of, of things, some of which are more plausible than others, especially given the size of Mill Creek. But yeah, there's been some work on that. Send along, yeah.
Do you guys anticipate that within the development contracts? There will be MWBE and small business requirements?
I guess that's up to the, the.
So will the developer be required by Mill Creek? And by code requirements to incorporate into the development specific requirement?
Well, that would be a city choice. I don't know if that's in the code now.
It's not in code now and I don't think.
I mean, it's, it's in all public contracting.
Prevailing wage, I believe it is.
No, MWBE and WBE, small business requirements are within all. Public contracting. So if you're talking about a development where I don't know how the funds are going to be provided. Those kinds of requirements are going to be necessary to incorporate.
So I think there's a distinction between. When we are contracting, let's say purchasing or getting a construction done. There is the requirement from the state that they have to be. With minority and the categories that you did provide it in it. When it comes to the development of, let's say. Hypothetically, if this building were to be redone. We, the, the DA, which is the development agreement. Our focus will, will shift a little bit, right? Because we do want the longevity of this, of, of the development of this building. Right? Looking at our policies, what we want, open space and so on and so forth. So there is a different. Venues to accomplish and the goals and policy that we're talking about in terms of. Business, small business and what we require here than what the development agreement also requires. I don't know if I'm answering your questions. Properly.
There's, there's construction requirements, yes, okay. And again, it's going to depend solely on what kind of funding. Mill Creek obtains for these developments. So there's construction requirements and then there's development requirements. So I know that they are in construction requirements if there's public funding. And there could be if there is development requirements, are we going to ask? The developer, developer to ensure that either rental or ownership of. Works, small works is going to have these kinds of requirements.
No.
Okay.
I haven't.
I think you need legal counsel to look at that.
Well, it depends if we're talking about a public, a public project or just if someone were to buy a private entity were to buy a private piece of land and do something on it. Obviously there wouldn't be those requirements.
Well, it just makes things much more political and much more difficult in terms of contracting. So those are just things you need to think about.
I'd like to suggest something too.
Yeah.
So I love the, the heart of Mill Creek to increase, sustain and increase the economic opportunities for businesses. And I just didn't, I'm not sure if you guys, you probably already have considered this, but I wrote this in a white paper a few years ago. To team with the Economic Alliance of Snohomish County to promote their business oriented products and services to the small businesses. You know, like the Washington small, the SBDCs of course, the, the PTAC. And then the SBTRC, the US DOT Northwest Small Business Transportation Resource Center. I envision that you guys are already having a good working relationship with the businesses right now to equip them to succeed and have all the resources that are available to them in this county.
Yeah, I think all those partnerships are important. There is that goal on partnerships and we could. Incorporate more of those entities. The economic alliance is already mentioned. But I think that it does make sense to incorporate partnerships into this goal too. So can you send us that list?
Yeah.
We'll. Or just stick it on your, on your comments to this in the, in this goal and then we.
I'll take a picture, but maybe I can send it to you.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, that's fine too. Thanks. Okay, anything else or we can move on to housing? Okay, so we will look forward to your comments on that and next month we'll discuss feedback on economic development goals and policies. Meanwhile, here is what we heard on housing. We heard from four commissioners. There were some overall concerns with focus on middle housing and lower income levels. We have a lot of good language and small suggestions that we have taken into account. And then like we did last month with land use, there is some specific feedback on several policies and ideas that we're going to discuss this evening. So on the general note first. I wanted to address sort of the question of why there's a strong focus on affordable housing. And on housing types in the goals and policies that we presented. For a lot of, a lot of that is because of this very strong housing push coming from the GMA. Coming from HB twelve twenty at the state level, coming from the way that that has made its way down into the countywide planning policies and. And requirements. So the GMA, PSRC and Snohomish County Housing Goals and Policies were provided in your, in the packet. And the, these entities will review the draft Mill Creek policies for compliance. So if there's things that are important regional policy that aren't covered, then they'll ask you to add them. So that's one reason why a bunch of that very specific language with lists of income types and lists of housing types. Made it all the way down from the state into this comp plan is because of that sort of. Additions to the GMA that, that happened with HB twelve twenty. State and regional policy guidance does place a special focus on the needs of moderate and low income households, special needs populations. And the housing needs of Mill Creek's future residents. And I think that's another important point to think about is that the, a lot of these goals and policies. Are intended to shape the housing opportunities for future residents of the city. Without changing necessarily the current housing opportunities in the city of which there are many. And, and which are of a certain type. And, you know, a, a lot of the focus on new housing types is because that's what the city has more control over in a lot of ways with. Where and of what type of new development occurs. So that's why sort of one main reason that there's a focus on a lot of these very specific. Income targets and housing unit type targets in the goals and policies. Not to preclude the existence of Mill Creek single family neighborhoods or anything, but rather to. Address these new state laws and also to address the needs of, of future Mill Creek residents. So secondly, the housing types also have come in with HB eleven, ten and thirteen thirty seven, the requirement for all cities to allow. Middle housing types and ADUs. And the goals and policies focus more intensive development into designated sub areas. So sub areas, we've talked a lot about this sub area, but also there's the. EGOV and the town center and the emphasis on sub areas. Is another reason why there's a lot of talk about density in these goals and policies. And finally, as we know, there's a lot of HOAs here in Mill Creek and, you know, those provide some restrictions on what's allowed. And that is not governed by this, by this plan. Those restrictions that were in place before. HB twelve twenty passed are still in place and have not been affected by the state legislation. So, yeah.
So, so just on the last one, you talked about some restrictions on future development. Can you articulate what you mean by those, those restrictions?
Uh, some HOAs prohibit things like duplexes or anything more dense than a single family use per lot, one unit per lot. Some HOAs also provide restrictions on building ADUs. And any of HOAs that had CCNRs that provide those restrictions on, on further density. That were in place before twenty twenty three or whatever the date was, June, we talked about it a few months ago, June. Are still in place.
So would it be beneficial to incorporate what those restrictions are?
Well, we don't have a comprehensive list of exactly what restrictions there are in each HOA in Mill Creek.
So, but it can be illustrated.
Yeah, well, we have attempted to do that when we were looking at the housing capacity and the middle housing. Land capacity by leaving those areas out of assumptions for increased density. So in the, in the, in the background chapter and the housing background that we've been talking about here. Those HOAs are shown on the map and as areas where it's unlikely that there will be, you know, future middle housing, increased housing or ADUs. But I mean, they're, they're not, those restrictions aren't subject to any increased densification that comes from the goals and policies in the plan.
And Benjamin, just for, just as an example, I am a VP of our HOA, a small one, just a hundred eighty. And we had to pay a lawyer to interpret and make sure that our CCNRs could exempt. ADUs from being built and we were, we're resting on the CCR that says only one single family dwelling unit per lot.
Yeah, it's, it, it would be quite a task to catalog all of them since there's a lot of HOAs in Mill Creek, but as you said.
Yeah, but there's got to be certain generic. Statements that are made within all the HOAs, which could be. Incorporated interiors, for examples or illustrations as to what kinds of restrictions exist.
We, we could put examples, yeah, but I think. I think we did cover those in that background document. I mean, I don't think that there, there's a need to. Or to necessarily have a policy about that because it's not an action that the city is going to take because. The HOAs are independent of the, you know, of, of these actions that the city is required to take. So, but i- in the housing element itself, in the, in the write-up, there is a discussion of, there will be a discussion of the HOAs and the types of restrictions. As we know, you know, a discussion like we've had here, saying that they likely restrict. For example, the building of ADUs or of increased density above one unit per lot. Okay. So to that end, we have drafted a new policy. About preserving the vitality, the importance of preserving the vitality of the existing neighborhoods in Mill Creek and existing housing stock in the city. To, to, so that there is a policy specifically related to, as I said. The existing single family character and neighborhoods in the city. So we're going to go through the. Goals in order. And on the left of each slide are basically a summary of some specific comments and on the right are what we've done. And I have the goals and policies here if we need to reference them too. So I'll go through these. If you have questions, feel free to, you know, just chime in. There were a couple requests to add high income households to the list of income bands. We added that. It wasn't there originally because as I said, there's the, the state policy. Lists the ones you have to put in moderate income, low income, et cetera. So anyway, there's nothing precluding us from putting that in. We added that to the list of income bands at a couple of different points. Special needs were, populations were discussed in two policies in a slightly awkward way. So we've taken up the second one. There was a question about fair housing policy and fair housing law. So there is a policy about fair housing. Support fair and equal access to housing for all persons regardless of race, color, religion, et cetera, et cetera. There are also fair housing laws that exist. But the state specifically wants to see a mention of fair housing in the policies. And in fact, it's even at the GMA goal level, it's one of the things that's specifically called out in the list of things they want to see. Yeah, so that's why that policy is there. But again, yeah, there are existing fair housing laws on the books. Here we go on jobs, housing balance. Commissioner Brials, yeah, thanks for your comments on that. We've revised the policy a bit. To talk about that jobs, housing relationship more in the economic development element and here to talk. More about commuting and traffic, several of the things which were mentioned in the original policy that sort of got watered down. We've reintroduced that language from the original policy about reduction of. Commute times through placemaking and, you know, additional housing construction. So those are the adjustments to, oh, that's the one about community lifestyle. Yeah. Create a community lifestyle with a balanced mix of family wage jobs and a variety of housing options that reduces traffic and commute times for residents.
So on that, I just, one, one thing that I'm thinking there is that we've seen these goals for the future and the numbers. Of say, housing that we need to. Enable in the city by, I don't remember the year goal, but.
Twenty forty four.
Twenty forty four, okay. By twenty forty four. And that that was on the order of like twenty thousand people. To house, housing that would enable twenty thousand people to live here more than currently do. And then the jobs increase was like nine hundred?
Yeah, something like that.
So those numbers. Work considerably against the goal of heading towards one to one. So I just, I, if we're, if we have two goals that are going in opposite directions, how are we going to resolve that?
Yeah, that's a good point. Well, I think the, the first step is sort of taking that out of here and talking more about. What the original intent of that policy was around, you know, a mix of jobs. In the community and opportunities to live near where people work rather than necessarily adding the same number of jobs as housing units. I think when it comes to the economic development element and the jobs, housing balance. You know, we, we didn't explicitly mention one to one or that as a goal or in, in, in the goals and policies. It was just to sort of, you know, create more opportunities for employment that would allow. You know, the things we've been talking about, people that live near where they work and all that. So I think if we keep it on that level, just to acknowledge that there is. You know, it's primarily residential and that. You know, the city's maybe interested in, in not necessarily. Reshaping itself to be an employment hub, but just to create opportunities where they, where they arise.
Yeah, it would be a very significant shift for Mill Creek to become an employment hub.
Yeah. And I don't think we've gone that far, but if you feel that we've gone too far in that direction in the economic development goals and policies, then we're happy to, you know, to turn it back.
Based on what I've seen today, I would not say that. A few opportunities is very different from, yeah, we're going to knock down all these houses and just put in a factory.
Right, oh god, yeah, right now.
We're going to make so many widgets.
Or.
Regardless of whether the market wants them, whatever, yeah.
Land of space up on the hill, there's a golf course out there.
Yeah. One line, right? It should go straight. Solid joke. But then the follow on to that, then I ask, I guess one of the questions I have, it's actually about that ratio, jobs to housing. I guess, does that housing number account for individual people within housing? And then how many jobs are intended to support how many people in a household? Maybe, or even, see, I mean. In, in, in my neighborhood, my immediate neighbors, five of six households are retirees. So there's no current employment there, direct, at least not the main income.
Right, right.
And so I, how does that work if we say, oh, we're going to add a job because we added a house? And it's like, well, what if it's retirees? Well, they don't, they don't want a job.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, the, the, okay, so on the first point, the amount of. People is tied to an assumption of future household size, which is slightly smaller than current household size. So those on, on a sort of math level, those are tied together, you know, at the county level, just so that the forecasts all work out. But they're not tied to a number of jobs. I mean. Regional models of job forecasting often do tie. Specific population, specific job numbers to specific population increases. So you say you expect the county to grow by a certain number of people. So because of the employment per person rate countywide, you might expect the county to grow by this many jobs. So that's a good basic way of looking at how many jobs might come in the future. Or at least a starting point for that. So I think maybe on a larger regional level, there is that connection in the forecasts. But I'm sure that the county is doing more than that and also looking at. You know, the current employment landscape and the major employers in Snohomish County, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. I just, when I bring up something like twenty thousand versus nine hundred. Okay, thank you. I, just when I bring up something like twenty thousand versus nine hundred, yeah, those, those numbers are wildly off. Well, maybe nine hundred actually supports like five jobs each or something. So it's more like forty-five hundred to nine hundred is a one to one.
Right, right.
In the ratio, I don't know exactly how that works. And that's one thing I wondered as well. Are we really comparing apples to apples or apples to mega apples?
Yeah. Did I answer your question?
Uh, I think so. Uh, the only thing, the only way it could be more clear is if you actually told me, yes, in this. At the PSRC, one job is expected to support three point three two.
Right.
Housing people.
Yeah.
Or something like that. I, and I have no idea what that number is, but if it was something like that, then that would help us to gauge and judge.
Yeah, well, there are, yes, there are also, you know, models of different types of jobs. You know, industries and. And, and how that changes, like, you know, if you have services, industry jobs or if you have, sorry, what am I trying to say? If you have. Like, uh, uh, somebody who makes a lot of money and then has a lot of disposable income and spends it, that has a knock-on effect that can create a certain number of jobs. So, you know, this is sort of the, the other direction of this analysis, but there, there is like a whole world of impact analysis. It's called where you, you look at, you know, a certain employment type and, uh, and model how many jobs will be created by. By the jobs that will be created by that one employment type. So for example, if you put in, you know, a factory or if you have a, a. An Amazon office or something, or, or a la office or whatever it is, you know, you know, then those jobs will stimulate other jobs. So there is a lot of modeling that's pretty complicated on these things that I think. That's kind of the other, other way around though, rather than looking at population increase and how many jobs it will support. That's kind of looking at what kind of knock-on economic effects you can do.
Sounds, sounds like it's more complex than a one to three point three two.
It is.
Okay.
Sadly, or maybe happily, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. Goal two. This is the goal about a wide variety of housing choice. So why are only duplexes called out? Yeah, in the list of housing types, we just put duplexes and ADUs because that's all that's required by HB twelve twenty. But, you know, if, we can add other housing types to that list if, if there's interest to, you know, add. Triplexes or fourplexes or townhomes or whatever to the list of housing types throughout the city. But, you know, since Mill Creek is only required to allow duplexes on eligible single family lots, that's the only one we put in. So someone suggested to add pre-approved housing designs to streamline production. This is a great idea. Thank you for that. We'll put it in. It, the, the goal, the policy on streamlining production was kind of vague, so it's nice to have, it's a good idea to have something more concrete. There were, uh, there was a policy on homeownership. That looked at increasing ownership opportunities at a variety of income levels. And then reducing barriers to homeownership opportunities for communities of color and other disadvantaged populations. So we put those into two policies instead of one, per your suggestions. There was a comment on the minimum wage here and the living wage. That is addressed in the economic development element. So. It was on the. On the, uh, something about housing affordability on one of those policies. Uh, but it is, it is in there in the economic development element. We can put a call out here. When we're talking about housing affordability to, to lead over to that policy and economic development. Okay, H three. This is the goal on housing location encompassing policies about housing in various parts of the city. How do we know if development is aesthetically consistent? There was a policy about. Uh, ensuring that new housing, you know, is aesthetically consistent with surrounding neighborhoods. Uh, and it, it's through design guidelines. Essentially, it, it, it said aesthetic. Exceptively consistent through development design standards. So it's really about refining those design standards. To whatever the city and, and council and commissions desired aesthetics are. Uh, but that's a little more specific than we need to get into in the policy level, I think, leaving it at design guidelines should suffice here. And then, you know, that's something to be developed afterward. Um, what is considered near transit? Good question. According to PSRC, it's a half mile from light rail and a quarter mile from bus rapid transit. So we added those distances to the policy. Suggestion to add bike and pedestrian access to employment and amenities. We talked about that already. It's in the employment element, economic development element. Uh, same on the living wage and minimum wage that came up here again in one of the policies in section three. So we will put the policy numbers in active element in here so that there can be cross-referenced. Okay, H four, this is. The affordable housing goal. So there are a couple of comments. How do we know that fee waivers and incentives are reducing the cost of housing? And not just increasing developer profit? This is a good question as well. Uh, the answer essentially is that these incentives and waivers that are talked about here. Are, were intended to be tied to specific affordability. Limit, uh, limits or levels as far as rent caps, you know, at a percentage of the AMI. So for example, if there was a SDC waiver or something for affordable housing construction, it would be contingent on. Uh, the developer providing whatever the required number of units is that the SDC waiver, you know, if it's twenty percent of units are affordable at eighty percent AMI. For example, then, you know, those units would have to be affordable at that objective rent level based on the HUD AMI. Uh, so that would presumably preclude, preclude the developer from just taking extra money. Uh, does preservation of existing housing stock include subsidies for repair of distressed housing? Yes, that's a great idea. Uh, we've incorporated that in there as a potential strategy for, for preservation. And there's a lot of programs like that in many cities. Yeah.
So I'm, I'm just gonna read this because I can't remember all this data in my brain. Have you been able, has the, the city addressed such incentives as deferred property tax? Split rate taxes, home repair assistance. The DOE weather assistant, weatherization assistance program, these are all to preserve the older housing. FEMA's disaster assistance program, housing repair programs. And authorization, yeah, that, that's it. I'm wondering if, that's a big list. I can send that to you if you want.
Yeah, send it along. Do you, guys, do you know about any existing programs for home, um, repair?
There's a state law, RCW eighty forty thirty, forty, eighty-four thirty-seven. That allows property tax referrals for all homeowners with limited income of fifty-seven K or less. Is that something that can be implemented here to help preserve the hu- older housing stock? It's already, is that something that can be, you know, like shared with the older homeowners or kind of like a public education? Whereas I know that's a lot of taxes deferred for you guys to receive as well, so.
Yeah, so I think if you're lower income over sixty-five, you can go to the county and you put in a form that says I make less than forty-five thousand dollars. For a household of two and they defer your property taxes or eliminate them. There's different programs and I think it's a statewide kind of thing in the county is where it's implemented, because the county is the assessor of all taxes.
I think they're, they're, they're reimbursed after death of the property owner as well and or the sale of the house.
Some of them are deferred and paid when you sell that house. Some of them, I think, go away entirely. I think it depends on income level. If you're really, really low income, I think you just never pay him. I'm not, not exactly sure, but anyway, those programs are through the county because the county handles all tax assessments. So the city doesn't handle tax assessments.
Is there also a possibility and is it reasonable? Do you have a permit fee waiver for rehabilitation of older housing stock?
Uh, it's, it's certainly possible, I imagine. We move over to policy decision, I guess, on the city level, but we could add it to the list of potential things. Did you have something you wanted to say? Okay. Okay, um, so that's it on housing. Anything else? Uh, questions, comments? There will be a, you know, a revised version of goals and policies coming in the final, in the full plan draft. Um, I don't know what month that will be, Kara, but in a little while, after we've gone through the other elements.
Yeah, I think that'll be mid to late summer if I had to estimate. We'll have to get through capital facilities, utilities, transportation, those other guys if you go to the next slide. But I think we were playing around with the idea of. Potentially doing some drafts earlier, so we'll have to talk to staff and, and come back to planning commission on that. Yes, so next steps, um, so we're following a very. We're following a template now, so next month we hope to get your feedback by May twelfth. And I know this is definitely a quick turnaround for you all, but it gives us. Uh, three business days to read all the comments and kind of wrap our heads around it and prepare the presentation that you see tonight. So if you can and are able to send those comments back by the twelfth, that would be very helpful for our team. Um, so we'll discuss economic development and then we will introduce two new elements. So that will be environment and then the parks, recreation and open space goals and policies. So you'll receive two in May. So you'll have double duty and I'd recommend starting early on that one. And then June, again, the template will discuss those elements and then introduce transportation. Which is generally a bit of a beefier set of goals and policies that are very guided by regulations. July, we will discuss those and then finish up with utilities and capital facilities. And I think if you go to the next slide. So August is where we'll kind of, we'll kind of taper down our review of things from planning commission side. So we'll introduce more content-based instead of goals and policies. So we'll introduce subarea. And the community profile content and development regulation updates that are needed to be compliant with the GMA and PSRC and Snohomish County. And then in September, that's what we'll start our, our full review of the, of the document and then talk through lots of big things. And then make our recommendation hopefully to city council. I don't know if folks have questions on those things.
I guess how, it's maybe it's under comment or a question. We talked about the, the housing policies here briefly tonight. And then it was mentioned they would be put into the document, say by August. And I know we eventually have to shoot the engineers and get on with building the product. And I guess if we're expected to look at this in August and say, eh, verily. I guess if, if it would be possible, it might be nice for the planning commission to review those again. And unless there's, you know, something somebody absolutely can't live with, we might make a revision. But I think there's, this is a big enough deal, more than one review period could be incorporated somehow.
Sure, yes, planning commission will have a chance to review the full draft plan. Um, and we'll give you hopefully enough time to, to get into the nuts and bolts. But that's kind of, we're hoping that this early review of the goals and policies, we're, we're hoping to sort through most of the concerns. And, you know, there might be some tweaks of punctuation and a couple of words here and there, but we're hoping that most comments are coming in now. So we can avoid those big changes later on.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Speaking of minor editorial issues, um, one, I'm a fan of the Oxford comma and two, if you go back one slide. You have open space goals and policies.
Ah, good catch.
And clearly, clearly you copy and pasted it because it's in each of the lines. But I, you did say policies each time. I knew what you meant. I'm just saying.
Thank you, because I will repeatedly use that slide.
Yeah, there you go. I catch it early, right?
Yeah, catch it early.
Thank you. And yes, if you ever see me missing an Oxford comma, please call it out because that's one of my pet peeves.
I, I will be here for you.
Thank you. Support each other.
We know how the, one thing we will not find in the plan.
So I think that, and your presentation, I know there's a few more.
No, that's it.
Slides and attachments.
Yeah, thank you for your time and feedback and look forward to chatting about economic development feedback next month.
Thank you, thank you. So we have, we are up to for the good of the order and are there good of the order things?
I've got one if nothing else. So there's a, a company called nineteen sixty-one, Rob Fenty, you may have heard us talk about. So the council's been talking about vision and some three to five-year strategic policies. That work has been going on. It's kind of coming to an end in the next week or next council meeting or two. The council took a tour down to Woodinville, Kenmore and Bothell last week. Six of the seven members went down, so a bunch of staff went down to kind of get a sense of what it looks like, some of the new kinds of development. And kind of get a sense of what placemaking is and some, some ideas. They're gonna collect those ideas next Tuesday. If you have an opportunity to zoom in and watch the meeting, that's great, or maybe afterwards, watch that collection. I think it's gonna be kind of a long meeting. So if you don't want to sit through three hours worth of meeting, you might come back later. But look at that section where the council's been asked to bring their top five ideas that they got from this. And so Sean is one of them, but the others, other five council members were on the tour is gonna say, here's what I think was interesting, or here was exciting. Here's what I didn't like, or here's what I did like. And I think that the trick is that, that we kind of wish all that work would, would have been done a year ago. So you guys could have been doing this work on the comp plan to line up, but at least it's being done. I think there's an opportunity for us to look and say. How do these policies you're working on for housing, land use housing and particularly economic development, how do those things line up? And I think there's a kind of a scramble that has to happen here. We're not too late, but I think there's an opportunity to have another joint planning commission. And council, city council meeting, particularly around economic development. I think it's tough to put those goals together. Think, council will have lots of inputs to that, so I think we should look forward to some discussion. I think we're talking about one of the meetings in May as being a chance for this group to come back and report some more. Both the consultant and this group to come back. I can't remember if it's the seventh or the fourteenth. And we got, we got a bigger thing on the twenty-fourth, but yeah. Yeah, so I think the seventh is gonna be a meeting, but anyway, there could be more of those opportunities to cross over because ultimately the council's got to adopt this. They need to be in sync. They're not getting it cold in September. So that started with a joint meeting you had. Couple of sessions ago, which was great. They really enjoyed that and I think it was good for the community. So that's my, for the good of the order.
No, thank you. So that'd be the Tuesday, four twenty-three city council meeting.
Yes.
For that presentation by.
Yeah, Rob Fenty, we'll, what we can do is afterwards, we usually have a, a video together by marketing communications folks. They give you a timestamp that you can go to the forty-fifth minute if you don't want to really watch the whole thing. I mean, it's, it's fascinating stuff. Sean's always got some good things to say at the end. He has to stay awake till the very end because usually he's the last one to make comments and that's always, always the last, yeah.
So, commission, any other comments? Good of the order? So then I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor? Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all.
For a second, the, uh, adjournment?
Oh, we used the one over, Mill Creek over by, like, Gold, Gold Creek. Yeah, yeah, that's it. Well, it's still. I can't remember her name. It's the woman who's there. She's been wonderful. We have. Probably in her thirties or forties.
Um, yeah, because we used to go there all the time.
I, I think the guy, yeah, I think Doug sold it, but I think.